I'd like to call to order and welcome everyone to the regular public meeting for the Lower Gwinnett Township Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, September 26, 2023. The Board of Supervisors met in executive session on September 30th, no, on September 20th, 2023, and prior to tonight's meeting to discuss matters of real estate, litigation, and personnel. I'm going to start off with public comments on items that are not on the agenda. Are there any public comments? Can you just come forward and state your name and your address?
Hi, Kate Madden. I'm 916 Penland Pike, and I'm here to inquire about the status of the second cellphone tower that we're considering building.
Second one, what do you call in the second one?
So the first one, I believe, is at Penland Woods, and then the second, and then the other one was going to be here, but now we're looking at other options.
Okay. I'm going to turn it over to our solicitor if you want to give an update.
You can stay there if you want. Whatever you want to do. Yes, other options are being explored. One would be the Gwinnett Mercy Elementary School. There has been, I'll say there have been discussions between rise-up towers and the school that have gone to this point, I would say favorably, but there isn't a definitive deal that's been made just yet. But it's, I would say, headed in the right direction.
Thank you. Any additional comments? You can come forward, sir.
Daniel Steinman, 800 Norris Town Road, Spring House, Pennsylvania. Read in your recent bulletin about trail etiquette and the danger of bicyclists. You may be going too fast and don't call out. I know there's not much you can do about people that you don't see, but it is a problem. The other one is, I went down to the end of the trail, Norris Town Road, and you have a nice sign there that says, "No winter maintenance." It's no ice and all, walkage risk. I would suggest that there also be, in addition, or an extra small sign that says, "Danger from falling limbs and trees all year long." It is a problem. If somebody gets hurt, I hope nobody does. So far, we've been very lucky. And I just brought a few pictures I took of fallen trees and limbs, and can't tell when they're going to go.
Okay.
Or what caused it.
Thank you.
That's just a suggestion.
This is towards, towards Welsh Road?
This is towards Norris Town.
It's towards?
As far as I can tell from the picture. Or if that's on Pike, but it goes down.
It's not unique to that trail. Yeah, I think we've heard this. Yeah, you're not alone in your concern.
That stays place all year long, and the sign would tend to make people think, well, it's not dangerous in the summer, it can be in the winter.
Fair point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments from the public? Just state your name. Is she here? Ms. Taylor, can you hear us?
Hello?
Can you hear us?
Me or someone else?
No, you, Ms. Taylor.
Oh. Well, you said, I didn't understand. You said comments that are on the agenda or not. The first one were not, right?
Yes.
So now they are?
No, we're still on public comments for items that are not on the agenda. Do you have a comment for something that's not on the agenda?
No, I do not, Danielle.
Okay. Any additional comments?
From me?
No, no, I'm just asking in general to all the public that is here and online. Okay. So next up to general business, first up, we have before us recommendation to authorize a public hearing to consider an amendment of conservation easement and any other requirements necessary to permit a cell tower in the maintenance area of Penland Woods Park. We have included in our board packet a memo from our township manager outlining, I think, the sequence of events as it relates to our public meeting on July 11th and a next steps. I don't know if there's anything additional this solicitor would like to add.
No, I think the memo is very detailed and spells out the process.
Okay. This was included in our board packet. It was online. Are there any questions from the board?
I'll just note that I'm recused from discussing this issue.
Any additional comments from the board?
No.
Any comments from the public? Seeing none, so we have before us a recommendation from our staff to authorize the advertisement for a public hearing to consider an amendment of conservation easement and any other requirements necessary to permit a cell tower in the maintenance area of Penland Woods Park. I'd like to make a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And one recuse. Next up, we have before us the approval of a historic marker for Penland School. Included in our board packet is a memo from our township manager outlining the application that has been received as it relates to install a township, a historic marker recognizing the history of the Penland School. In addition, we have included in our board packet an application from Ms. Jones outlining the history as well as documenting some resources related to how that was compiled. Are there any, and reasonings in support of research? Are there any questions from the board? Seeing none, are there any questions from the public?
First of all, yes, I have a major question. First of all, why is Ms. Gloria's application on there and not mine? So you're saying there was only one application?
No, I did not say that. I think included in our board packet was the application from Ms. Jones.
Well, why was her? Listen, I didn't come today because I was exhausted, and I'm exhausted behind this process. But there was something that Janine wrote in her email that made more sense to me than anything. I want to go on record saying I understand and I see the point of view that, you know, having it this year without a marker, without having an acknowledgement of the 100th year this year without a marker doesn't really make sense. But if you have it when a marker is available, and that just may happen to be 2024, then you still acknowledge that it's been 100 years. So I get it. I get it that it's that my perspective and her perspective or the perspective of the board, I don't know who she was talking about. So I just want to say that the main thing is that something gets acknowledged about that spot. I think it's still atrocious and ridiculous that I've had to have been run around for a year, more than a year, because I did send you an email that I wrote to you, and I know Danielle, it was to you as well, in January of 2022. So we sit here on the 26th of September, 2023, and I still feel disrespected. And I don't know why, Danielle, you have never really responded to me directly, but I find that disrespectful. I sat there and I listened to Ms. Gloria, and I don't disagree with the historical context. And personally, I think that the Lord Gwinnett Township should do something to rectify what went on in that community for 31 years in the modern world, modern America at the turn of the century. But I wanted to just make it clear that there has to be a better way to be transparent about what you're doing. Because I think that if you can make provisions for Reverend Kwan to have some type of marker for his anniversary, then all along, you could have done the same thing to acknowledge it this year. It doesn't make sense to have something in November, December to honor the year. So I just feel like you guys have disrespected me. Whether it's a leadership decision from Danielle since she's chair, you've just disrespected me. And I'm going to go ahead with the fact that a historical marker is most important, but I want to be on record that it's just been pure disrespect. I've asked for a right-to-know request because I don't understand the process in which Ms. Gloria submitted the application the day of the historical meeting where I submitted it on September 13th. I want to know the difference. I want to know when the applications came out, when Reverend Kwan apparently submitted it two days later. How did he know? And did he do it on behalf of the church? So there's a lot of things that don't make sense to me about this process, and I feel like somewhere along the way, there was some bias and some covertness. And it's disgraceful. It's just simply disgraceful. And I wasn't going to track myself down all the way there to just see the faces and just get the glares and have the disrespect in person. I just don't have the time to do that. So I just want to go on record that I'm going to agree with not having it this year, but I hope that you will do a very good job in being inclusive when you do get the marker, that you consider the generations of people, not just one side or not my side. There's a whole bunch of people in 100 years that have been impacted by that space, by the baseball field. So I want to be a part of that process because I legitimately submitted an application. So that, I'm in favor of a marker whenever it happens. But I think that when you look at, and the history will show that you made all these provisions to rush for Reverend Kwan, but then we're going to see how long it takes you to get a marker, a metal marker for the Penland School. So I just think it's a bad precedent that you've set. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional comments?
Gloria Jones has a comment.
Hey, Ms. Jones.
I worked very hard following the directions for a marker application. And anyone could make or apply to have a marker. And so I followed the directions of the marker application. I did some research because I was interested in seeing what other markers had on them. And I checked through some states and saw that our application was very similar. So I worked a long time on it. And my reason for submitting a marker was because I felt that the Penland Elementary School and what happened after the 1954 Supreme Court decision was very important. I spent seven years in that school. I also was taken to the Penland School Field and watched by my cousins as my father played basketball with the other young men. And that field has been very important to the community of Penland. And when I submitted my letter to Mr. Metcalf, who was the chair of the committee, I mentioned also that in some way that recognition could be given to the Penland Elementary School grounds, still known as the School Field to Village Resonance. And that for over six generations, the School Field had been a place where the African-American residents of Penland Village carried out their family recreation and social activities. It was very important to all of us in Penland. And I kind of thought that since this was a historical marker, that we would consider the two places and that it would cover all in Penland. And this is a historical marker when things began. And so I thought it was important to put it in a historical context. And that's what I did. And I understood that people were going to submit marker applications in the last advisory committee's meeting. And so that's what I did. And anyone else who wants to submit an application should feel free to do so. And there's an opportunity to submit applications three times. If the committee and the township doesn't like what it says, they have an opportunity to revise as they would like. So whether it be my application or Reverend Kwan's application, I don't have very much to say about that. But like I'm saying, anyone. So if someone wants, feels disappointed, then they need to submit an application and to follow the directions of the application. But I do think that the school board desegregation case was a very historic event. So that was my focus. So thank you for letting me comment on that.
Thank you. Are there any additional comments? So we have before us a memo that was prepared by staff that outlines the application and the recommendation of the Historic Advisory Committee. They voted at their meeting on September 21st, 2023, on this application, and they made the recommendation to the Board of Supervisors to approve a historic marker for this site of the Penland School while they finalize their review and the proposed wording for the marker. So this application for this historic marker, we're just voting on the fact of the marker at this location, is before us. I'd like to make a motion to approve the Penland Park site for a historic marker. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next up is the consideration of a requested PENDOT to add bike sharrows on Evans Road. I think we have someone from Montgomery County before us. If you could just come up and state your name?
Hello, Supervisors. My name is Andrew Turner. I am a transportation planner with the Montgomery County Planning Commission.
Thank you. And yeah, I don't know if the people online can hear you. You might have to pick up the microphone.
Hello, my name's Andrew Turner. I'm a transportation planner with the Montgomery County Planning Commission.
Thank you. So what's before us is, I guess, the consideration of a request on behalf of Montgomery County for Lower Gwinnett to consider a bike path on Evans Road?
Yeah, this is part of the PENDOT resurfacing program. So basically, PENDOT releases its schedule for resurfacing. This section of Evans Road is due to be resurfaced next year and basically to encourage bicycle facilities on PENDOT infrastructure. They go through their resurfacing schedule and kind of assess whether they are viable for bike lanes or sharrows. A shadow is a kind of marking for a shared. I guess it's a combination of share and arrow. So it's not a specific bike lane, it's a share of the road. A pavement marking. And basically, they consider whether a bike lane or a shadow is viable due to the width of the road, the speed of the road, the average daily traffic on the road. And the county and DVRPC, which is the Metropolitan Planning Organization, kind of help facilitate the process for PENDOT. So this year, we have looked at this section of Evans Road, and it seems to be suitable for, yeah, shadow pavement markings.
Are there any questions from the board? I have a couple of questions, but does anybody else have any questions to you want to ask?
I have a question, but Danielle, you go ahead. I'll ask after.
Okay. So you did talk about that you evaluated the width, the speed, and how soon it was going to be resurfaced. Was there any consideration, I think, to the traffic and the windiness of Evans Road? It's not necessarily a straight road, and it seems like it might be slightly hazardous to have bikers on that road?
As I, yeah. So they do, PENDOT do consider the average daily traffic counts and the speed on the road. This is also a PENDOT bicycle route. It's Route S, which runs basically on the southern end of the state. So kind of look at the sharrows. There's potentially cyclists on the road already, and the shadows kind of adds to that safety element for potential cyclists that are going to be on that road already.
So is it more because it aligns with the path that PENDOT would like bikers to take? Or is this the best road out of all the roads in Lower Gwinnett?
For sure, the route plays a part, but it's primarily kind of the safety aspects of the width, the amount of traffic, and the speed limit that PENDOT determine whether the road is good for shadows or bike lanes or not. Worcester, they got their section on Pot House Road resurfaced this year, and that is part of Route S as well, which is a bit further up to the east.
So when we make the request, PENDOT would have to approve it?
Yeah, they would be, so I guess the next step in the process would be an official letter to PENDOT saying that you're essentially interested in this. And then there would be back and forth. PENDOT would still need to do the engineering specs and determine exactly where all the shadow markings are going to be. And then you would, assuming things go ahead, the township would go into an agreement for maintenance of those shadows, of the pavement markings. It's difficult to determine how many times in between repavings, they would need to be repainted, but that would be the township's responsibility in between pavings.
The initial, the initial markings would be PENDOT's financial responsibility, and then everything else would be our responsibility?
Yes, in between repavings, yeah.
In between repavings? And then if it was repaved, PENDOT repaves it and then?
And will mark the shadows again, assuming that it's still deemed viable by PENDOT.
Tessie?
Yeah. So I agree with what Danielle said. There's two blind curves on Evans Road going out toward Route 63. And even when I'm in my car, I'm a little nervous going around those corners. Is there a proposal to widen and put a safe lane in there for bicyclists? Because it's not, as it stands now, I don't think it's all that safe. Even if there's not a lot of traffic, there are some.
There would be no additional widening or any construction. It would just be repaving the roads and putting down the markings.
In regards to the, oh, I'm sorry, Chad Dixon from McMahon, a township traffic engineer. In regards to the issue of the S-curves on the northern segment of Evans Road, PENDOT did come through earlier this year as part of their low-cost safety improvements program and added a number of warning signs and advanced pavement marking legends for those S-curves. That was pointed out to PENDOT approximately two years ago by the township and was added into the low-cost safety improvements plan, similar to the Gypsy Hill Road project recently. So PENDOT has gone in and done some work in that S-curve area recently to address the concerns the township has had with that, with that segment of Evans Road.
Is there, is there any consideration for, there's no lights in certain areas of Evans Road. There's not streetlights.
No streetlights, no.
So is there any consideration for that? It just seems like we're introducing the idea of take your bike out.
I think people are biking anyway, right?
Do you?
So I think that's the point.
Yes, excuse me, Janine, go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
It's my understanding that this is already a pre-routed Pennsylvania official bike route along Evans Road. And the addition of these sharrows will actually aid in the safety of the cyclists who are following this route.
We believe so, yes.
So you just didn't pick Evans Road really nearly in Lower Gwinnett Township? You chose this because you're trying to do this for the course of the statewide route?
Well, I should say, we didn't make those, the county didn't make those decisions. It was PENDOT that made those decisions, yeah. But I believe so, PENDOT. The, as I said, the safety is the main concern. It's the width of the road, the ADT, and then the speed of the road that they consider.
So that PENDOT kind of hires, so to speak, the Montgomery County Planning Commission to be their advocate for this initiative?
It's through DVRPC that we kind of coordinate. So we just kind of help facilitate, yes.
So PENDOT identified it. They came to you and said, through the coordination with the DVRPC, go ahead and ask the municipalities to ask us?
We, DVRPC and the county also looked at it as well after PENDOT kind of pushed it on to us essentially. It's also part of our bike, the county's bike Monco route due to the route being a PA bike route as well. So it's in one of our, the county's plans.
Where, where does the road, the bicyclist go after the person reaches the end of Evans Road? Is there any plan to extend the markers beyond Evans?
Well, the bike route, bike route S is already signed, and that continues actually on, I think it's 309 for a short section. But basically, when the next section comes up for resurfacing, this process will start again for that section. We have two sections that are being resurfaced in the county in 2024. So I'm not sure what the next few years will unfold at the moment.
You don't, you certainly don't mean 309, that you, that bicyclists are on 309.
I have my map here.
And which the speed is like 65?
No, bike route S goes onto 309.
Oh, my gosh. I cannot agree with that.
My only concern would be for the board, I'm sorry, Paul Kenny, Police Chief. We have residents, we have non-residents come to our parks because we advertise the trails and how beautiful they are, and they're safe. The board recognizes Evans Road, and if we have an outsider trying to pick a bike route for a day that has no idea what Evans Road looks like, but somebody feels it's safe to ride there, and Janine, if you rode there with your kids, you would turn around. You would not, so I would, I shake my head when I see that.
I might have misunderstood. I thought, I thought this was already part of a bike route, and so we're just, they just want to mark it as such?
Yes, there's already signage on the side of the road.
There's already signage that it's a bike part of this.
Yeah, there's the sign up on the memo is on the side of the road.
Yeah, that's correct. If you go on, there's a website that shows you Route S through the entire state. Evans Road is already designated on that map as part of.
And that's designated by PENDOT?
By PENDOT.
So they just create bike routes? Okay.
I did bring it up, and we're going to try to bring it up on the big screen. But when we're talking about 309, I think you're actually talking about Bethland Pike. So it isn't, it isn't the 309 highway, Tessie.
My goodness.
I'm trying to see if Jamie can bring it up on the big screen, but it's like a little portion of Bethland Pike that then connects to Hartman Road and then goes over the Keenest Road. If you go to PENDOT, bike route S.
Yeah, I am certainly in favor of increasing safe roadways for bicyclists, but I feel nervous when the road has two curves. Even if they're well-marked, I still feel very nervous about two blind curves and encouraging people to ride on that section.
Yeah.
You can zoom in. Yeah. Um, so these current signs that say Bike Route S are up is what you're saying on Evans Road?
Yes.
Is, is the state's plan, I guess, I'm just trying to understand the process. So they've marked out a bike route and then is the idea that anytime one of the roads on that bike route is up for resurfacing, they want to put, you know, either a bike lane or a shadows because it's already part of the bike route?
The, the routes have been established for a while and it definitely goes through another, every time a resurfacing road comes up, it goes through the vetting process again of safety, average daily traffic, width of road. And so, you know, if other roads would get bike lanes if they're wide enough. Um, it's just that this is obviously a narrower road, so the shadows are the recommended treatment.
Do they ever recommend no treatment on, like if it's part of the bike route, would they ever say, we're not going to put any signage markings on the road?
I, I do not know that. They have two on the schedule for 2024. I'm sure there's a lot more resurfacing going on in the county that they've not passed on to us for shadows. Although I'm assuming that.
When Pendot developed these routes across the state, they were evaluated by each of Pendot's engineering district for safety. So, you know, there was a safety evaluation completed by Pendot at the time those routes were designated. When they come through and resurface and look to add these markings and signs, the safety group at District Six, which is the district for, for Lower Gwinnett, will do another evaluation just to make sure that it can still be done in a, in a safe, in a safe manner. But they do, to, to resurface the entire route at once would of course be a significant massive project. So the strategy has been just to knock off segments of it over time as part of their annual resurfacing program.
And, and do they feel that this increase, this will increase biker safety? It won't sort of draw?
And like almost create what you guys call a?
Like families are an attractive nuisance, like families now think it's safe to bike down Evans Road?
It's gone through, yeah, Pendot's vetting process, so, you know, Pendot are, you know, have approved the shadows on the road. Yeah. I can understand that if you put markings on the road, then maybe that will attract more people. But the people that are already riding, riding on the, the roads, you put shadows down, then that increases visibility for them. It's already a bike route.
I understand. And presumably cars, when they see the markings, will be aware that this is not, this is a bike road and maybe they didn't know that before. So maybe it will calm some traffic.
It will definitely make the route more visible to, to drivers.
Are they obliged to behave, driving a certain way when they see these shadows on a road?
Um, it is essentially awareness that's, they're sharing. They are sharing the road with the cyclists, yeah.
That and the driver's test?
I think, I think the speed limit is as well, so.
I just wanted to clarify for Tessie, it actually does go up 309. I apologize, it goes up, it goes up to Hartman Road near the quarry. So I was incorrect, it isn't just Bethland Pike, it is going up 309. I'm just wondering. Has Pendot ever come out and once they evaluated it, when they were doing the resurfacing, determined, made a determination that that actually this isn't the correct route?
Not that I'm aware of, but there is another process once the letter from, if, if you'll decide to submit the letter, then the engineering still has to take place. And then there would be coordination between yourselves and Pendot at that point.
And so.
So if they come out and they do their surveys and their engineering, there's a possibility that they determine, once they see it on the ground, real life, that they, it might not be a good idea, we shouldn't go through with this. And they're just looking at all these routes on paper?
Um, I couldn't speak to that process, but I guess there's a possibility that that could happen.
And I apologize, I know you're from Montgomery County, we're grilling you like you're Pendot. I apologize. It just seemed so perplexing to us that they chose this road of all the roads they could have chose. Yeah, there's some, we have some nice, wide, beautiful roads with well-lit that might be safer to welcome bikers.
Yeah, well, but just not on the.
Yeah, but they're not on this route.
The other, the other issue is when there is a biker and an automobile driver wants to swerve around that biker on a narrow road like Evans, that, that is a very unsafe situation. And it happens, I, I see it happen. I don't know, I, I would say once every, I don't know, maybe two months or, or less, that drivers don't like to go slow behind bicyclers. And so they're always trying to swerve around them into the oncoming lane.
So just to be clear, and I think I, I think I want to understand what's before us. We have to consider this, we don't need to vote on this tonight, is that accurate?
Um, I think the deadline would be the end of October to get, I can touch with Pendot, I believe so.
Okay, I think I did see that. I think I would want our traffic engineer and our police chief to weigh in a little bit. I don't know if you guys are comfortable making any kind of statements today or if you want to wait till the next?
We can certainly collaborate and, and discuss it if, if one of the October meetings.
Yeah, and if you could come to us with a recommendation, I think some of the concerns that we have, you could give us any additional insight prior to the deadline.
Sure.
I think, any numbers on how, probably Pendot questioned the use of this stretch of the route? I don't think I've ever seen a cycle.
Oh, yeah.
Well, how many cyclists are on? I, I, I don't know. It's a, it's a, it's a very low volume road for, for vehicle traffic.
Oh, that's not true. Evans Road is a cut through and maybe it's, it's backed off a little bit now since 202's open, but there's a fair amount of traffic on Evans Road. At least the section down toward Gypsy Hill.
That's going to be my next question.
Um, the road will be resurfaced without any shadows, basically? Yeah.
We don't have any control over their bike route.
It just won't have that specific, when shadows identified.
Okay.
Yeah, it would remain the same, but with new surfacing, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Happy to.
Okay. Well, we thank you so much for coming before us, Mr. Turner, appreciate your time and I'm sorry again for us grilling you like you're Pendot.
Thank you.
Yeah, maybe next time Pendot should come to the meeting.
Thank you.
So we can make Pendot, yeah, make Pendot feel bad, not that.
Uh, Harry, did you have a comment? You can just come, yeah, come on up.
Harry Hallerman, 100 Coventry Lane. I've been bicycling in this area for 30 years. This is a subject that's very near and dear to me. As, as I understand it, S-root was planned and it could only use Pennsylvania roads, not township roads. So that limited them severely. Now, there are a lot of ways to get around Lower Gwinnett and Evans is not the ideal. Certainly 309 is, I'm with Tessie on that. I haven't seen anybody on 309. And thank goodness, I wouldn't want them to be, especially up at Hartman. That's a mess up there. So, you know, as far as marking the road, it can't hurt. But the board has to consider the cost of maintenance of, of the painting. That's, that's the issue you need to deal with, but it can't hurt. There are clubs, I belong to two local clubs and they do use Evans. They come in, they'll come across from English Village, across behind Stables, cut straight across and take Evans out to Plymouth Road. They'll do that.
In groups.
That's a club, that, that clubs will use that, they won't use 309, they'll cross.
Yeah.
But that, that's my understanding about Route S. And I've done sections of Route S and they're not very friendly.
They're not?
They are not friendly.
But I see all of the routes.
From here, from here to the river, they are not friendly.
Okay.
You see many showers?
No. No.
Okay.
I'm sorry? Well, it can't hurt. I mean, it's been my experience in this township that the board has always looked to try and make it safer for pedestrians and bicyclists. Builds that into your equation. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay. Any additional comments on the bike route? Okay, next up, we have before us a memo, a recommendation from our township manager around consideration for a ward of a needs assessment for an RFP for a public works facility. Included in that memo is that identifying that at our July 25th, 2023 board meeting, we authorized staff to issue a request for an RFP for an architect to complete a feasibility study. The deadline for proposals was Wednesday, August 30th. They indicated the five firms that did submit and included information from those five firms and have made a recommendation. The recommendation is for GKO, which is Gashalkane and O'Wark Architects in the amount of $18,000 to complete a feasibility study and a needs assessment for a public works facility. All information was included in our board packet and was online. Are there any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, we have before us the consideration of this recommendation from staff. I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract with Gashalkane O'Wark Architects in the amount of $18,000 to complete a feasibility study and a needs assessment for a public works facility. Is there a second?
Second.
All those?
Notice that it's an LGT, Lower Gwinnett Township business, so that's always a nice, very on top.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion does carry. Next up is the review of the 2024 minimum municipal obligation for township contribution. We did discuss this briefly at our last board meeting. Um, we have included in this board packet, uh, recommendation, just trying to get to the memo, hold on one second, from our finance director. And the finance director's recommendation is to reduce the rate of return from 7% to 6.5%. It, it identified that the pension advisory committee met January 23rd and received recommendations from our actuary. And there's further details in that memo that outline the rate, the MMO amounts and the calculation. Are there any questions for our finance director? Or any questions from the board in general?
Just confirming that the decrease of the interest rate will result in a net obligation of us of about $120,000? Yeah.
We cannot hear online.
Yes, to go from 6.75 to 6.5%, yes, it's about $115,000.
And what are, are we at 7% now?
Yes, we are.
So what's that jump to 7 to 6.5%?
That is.
I'm not sure I figured that one out.
No, I think it's about another $80,000, but I have to go back and look.
So about 200 grand or so of an obligation for us if we lower the interest?
Yeah, the rate of return.
The, the rate of return, which makes sense given rates of return.
Yes, and that will stabilize it a little bit more so that it will even out as you go forward.
And we're going to pay that extra either 120 or 100 or $200,000 if the rate of return isn't 7% anyway.
Yes.
We're just going to pay it in advance so that it's all trued up, is that?
Right, and then you're investing opportunities if you know you're trying to get to seven or a little bit more aggressive, a little bit more risky. So it would be better to stabilize it at a lower rate of return. That's more, more realistic.
Gotcha, thank you.
Any additional questions from the board? Any question from anyone online? Seeing none, so we have, we have before us a recommendation to reduce the rate of return assumptions for the uniform and non-uniform defined benefit pension from 7.7% to 6.5%. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion carries, thank you. Next up is our financial year-to-date. There is a review of that, that was included in our board packet. Are there any questions for our finance director? None?
I, I have a question. Is, are we all square with the sewer fund now? With Bucks County Water and Sewer, even the stuff historically that we couldn't figure out, we've figured out?
Yes, I figured that out a couple of months ago, it was in the memo, yes. And now each month when it comes, we reconcile to them, to the.
Wonderful, thank you.
Yep. Any additional questions? I like, thank you so much for the fund balances, I, I appreciate them. Not a problem. Um, seeing no questions, we don't have to vote to approve. Um, next up, we have a review of our township engineer's report. It was included in our board packet, it is also online, outlines the activities of our township engineer. Um, are there any questions from the board?
I thought we approved 6.5.
We approved 6.5, I'm sorry. You didn't hear, I'm sorry, it's only eight o'clock, guys. We approved 6.5. Sorry.
I think she was referring to your report that you gave us. We don't have to approve that.
Oh, okay. That's what I was saying, I'm sorry, the, the financials, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. So before us, we have the township engineer's report outlines all of the general township projects. Work performed last period as it, as it relates to August and work to be performed this period is in September. Are there any questions from the board? And a question from anybody, the public and anyone online? Seeing none, thank Mr. Hirsch for the lovely report. Next up is a review of our traffic engineer report includes update on projects that the traffic engineers are working for currently. Are there any questions for our traffic engineer?
I have a question. And, and you might not be able to answer this because you may not know, it's not township work, but there's been some work going on at the Plymouth meeting, I mean, sorry, Plymouth Road, Evans Road area. And I was just wondering, Chad, if you knew the status of what's going on there and anticipated completion?
I was not aware of that work, I didn't notice anything the most recent time that I drove through there, so I'll look into that further, whether that's Pendot or Montgomery County working out there right now.
Yeah, they, about several days a week, they block off the, our path to get to the post office and train stop. So it's, there, there is a, a way to jog around the obstruction, but it's, it's very annoying and it seems to be interminable. So if we could get a bead on what the schedule is and the completion, projected completion, that would be great.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look into that. I know PICO has been doing some utility work. Yeah, we'll, we'll look into that. I know PICO has been doing some utility work along different segments of Plymouth Road for a few months now. And that may be it, but we'll look, we'll look into it further and get back to you.
Thank you.
Oh, I have a question, not for Chad, it's for Fred. With the Penland new trail crossing, you, there's trail approach work, the pavement markings.
Yes.
That's obvious what that is. But what, what exactly are you doing as the trail approaches? And, and do you have any idea when we can expect that final inspection from PennDOT and it to be fully optimal?
So the trail approaches are adjusted there to the new crossing. I saw there's a sign, a stop sign that was for the old trail that needs to be removed still. There's yield markings and the yield bars. They still have to be put in for the final inspection to meet the original plan. So we have a contractor, the weather hasn't been cooperating, so we should be wrapping that up soon. And it's usable. I mean, people can walk on it. It's just the markings on the road aren't complete.
So you can push the buttons and the.
And the lights, they're not on.
That's subject to the, the final inspection?
Yeah, the, the flashers themselves can't be activated until the final inspection by PennDOT. Like Fred mentioned, the crossing's usable. It's just the flashers aren't functional yet.
We had that scheduled?
Once the pavement markings are done, then PennDOT will schedule it with us, but they, they won't give us any dates until that pavement working, work is done.
We have to approve the Evans Road shadows first.
I'm envisioning like, like the four Beatles walking across. Maybe the four supervisors.
There you go.
Will it be this fall? Will it be this fall, we think?
Yes, it should be.
You want us to run across it?
Abbey Road. I get to be George Harrison.
Yeah, you should definitely do it. That would be really cute.
George was wearing shoes, though.
Any additional questions for our traffic engineer? Any from the public? Thank you so much for your lovely report. Next up is the approval of the minutes for our September 12, 2023 meeting. Did everyone have a chance to review those minutes?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of what date are we talking about here?
September 12.
September 12.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who carries? In our board packet was highlights from the supervisor liaisons related to our committee assignments. Are there any questions related to those reports? Seeing none, move on to staff updates. I think you're going to update us on the TMDL?
We had our meeting last week and the majority of the management committee voted for the consortium governance structure. So there's a meeting this week and they'll work out the details of implementing that type of structure and incorporating that into the plan that will get submitted to DEP.
Thank you.
Was there any, any real objection or no?
There wasn't. There was discussion about a stormwater authority. There were, basically the, the two boroughs were in favor of the stormwater authority just because they, you know, they're, they're kind of smaller. They don't have a lot of room for projects. But I think overall, they were, at the end of the conversation, everybody was pretty much agreeable. So there was concern about what type of protection the wastewater treatment plants would have under an authority because they couldn't be a dual authority. So that kind of, I think, changed some people's minds about that. So, so they're just going to work towards that moving forward, so.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the Spring House Intersection Construction.
Sure, just wanted to give a brief update since our last traffic engineer reported at the end of August. Some work has been done. PICO did finally get their poles moved to the new locations and moved their lines to those new poles. Utility work isn't done yet. There's some fiber optic lines and Verizon lines that have to be moved by those utility companies to the PICO poles. So JDM, the township's contractor, is coordinating and, and communication with PICO and those utility companies about getting those additional lines moved to the new poles over the next few weeks. Some construction work that they were able to complete over the last month was to install one of the underground stormwater basins and some other stormwater facilities within the project limits. We're starting to enter another period where we're in a little bit of a holding pattern until those additional utility lines can be moved to the new poles and the old poles can be removed. But we have a progress meeting with JDM this Thursday to talk about some more minor work that can be done. Any interim while those additional utility items are being taken care of, so we can continue to show some progress out there. So we'll be able to provide another update after that progress meeting on Thursday.
Were the, were the poles on the part of Norris Town Road between McKean and Bethland Pike? Were, were they, were they moved like any great distance?
There were some, there were.
Because it looked like they were barely moved and I didn't understand why they moved them.
Yeah, there, there were some that were moved just a very minor amount of distance. And they were just, they were moved to get, get the clearance, the clearance area that PennDOT requires between the edge of the roadway and any utility poles. So there, I understand your question. There was a couple. There were just the.
Yeah. Just see a little light in between the old pole.
Right. One further update while I have the microphone. We did have the final inspection today for the McKean Road pedestrian crossing at the YMCA and the speed display signs with PennDOT and Beacon's contractor. Just some minor punch list items that need to be resolved and that should be done. You know, for the next few days to a couple of weeks. So we're just about to finish line there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions on the ship intersection construction? Next up, we have drainage improvements on Stonebridge Road.
Oh yeah, we're just wrapping up some replacement of stormwater pipe on Stonebridge Road. It was damaged corrugated metal pipe. It actually was damaging the roadway and backing water up, further up the road. So our crews were out there working. The residents were very understanding because we had to block the road and it's cul-de-sac one way in, one way out. So we moved when they needed to get in and out. But they were very patient and we tried to get the work done as fast as we can. Last few days, the weather hasn't been cooperative, so we have a little bit to wrap up. But it should fix the problem with the road and let the water run through like it's supposed to.
Thank you. Supervisor comments. Is there anything additional from staff? No? Okay. Tessie, you want to start us off?
Yeah, I'd like to congratulate the, the team that put together, particularly Sandy, moving the Lower Gwinnett Fall Fest indoors at, you know, the last minute. I understand it went very well and I'm sure all the residents who were able to attend were appreciative. And that's all.
Thank you.
Yes, certainly. Congratulations to the committee, the Fall Fest Committee. Neen, fearless leader, and the staff and public works who really showed up strongly. It was definitely an 11th hour pivot. Thank you to Ophelia bringing it inside for the very first time. Over Gwinnett Township history. So, yeah, it was, it was a great afternoon. Good job to all.
Neen?
I'll just echo what everybody else said and just pay a special thanks to our volunteers. And including, you know, we put a call out to residents to come help. And I mean, it was pouring rain and they were like schlepping carts and boxes from vendors to help load them up. So it was really a great way for, you know, the community to come together. It was amazing and thank you to everybody. That's all.
Yes, thanks to everybody who made Fall Fest such a success.
Just want to echo it, echo all of those thanks. Also want to pay special attention to Sandy, who showed great abilities to pivot and resilience. The entirety of the Fall Fest Committee helped and assisted. Also, we, we have to thank our gracious host, the Waziken School District, for allowing us to use the high school at the very last minute without hesitation and without any additional questions. Them and their custodial staff were a great help in ensuring that the Fall Fest went on when most other activities were canceled. So I think it was a tremendous effort by all. Can't thank the Fall Fest Committee and the Park and Rec Committee as a whole, and our community volunteers. And all of the vendors that came out from our community that showed their wares. And it was a great day, great event. With that, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.